We all ready? I think we're ready. Good evening, this is the meeting of the planning board for the Fourth of October. Anybody who's interested, please be here and attend. I don't understand why we say that. I'd like to call this meeting to order and also note that in, according to Massachusetts law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the chair. Does anybody intend to record the meeting? No? Then would you please join me in a saying the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, we have four items in public hearing this evening. The first one is case number PB 2022-17. Mason Family Realty Trust, Kenneth and Jill Mason, trustees, owner slash applicant. Attorney William Kroll, representative, seeks an approval of a waiver of site plan review and two use special permits for mixed-use development in the Village Commercial Overlay District for portion of the, quote, Mason Jar Condominiums complex, units one, two, and three. Proposal seeks to convert the former restaurant establishment into a new commercial art studio and a residential unit on the first floor. No changes are proposed to units two and three. The request is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section 325-55F-51.L and dot dash 51.M. The subject property is located at 544 Route 28, Assessor's ID 14/F4-C1-1, F4-C1-2, and F4-C1-3, located in the C-V zoning district in the Commercial Village Overlay District. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Attorney William Kroll, representing the petitioner this evening. I have Ken Mason here, Ken and his wife Jill Mason, who was the founder, I may say, of Channel 18 in Harwich. So, she's the reason we're on TV tonight.
Don't hold it against us.
Thank you, Jill.
This thing out of here.
And they are trustees of the Mason Family Realty Trust. So, I have seated to my right Ken Mason, who was chairman of the Harwich Planning Board for chairperson for ten years or so. He had the hot seat in the corner. And he was also...
Welcome back.
Thank you.
After that, he was a member, he was the Harwich representative to the Cape Cod Commission for three years. So, he has some background in planning and zoning, et cetera. So, in my narrative, I laid out in my narrative where we're coming from. I'll touch on that. I'm assuming that you've all had a... The property, this property has a lot going on. It's been condominiumized. We formed it, changed the form of ownership to a condominium form of ownership, and there's four units. Units one and two are in the main building that faces Route 28. So, unit one was the former Mason Jar establishment that Ken and Jill ran for many, many years successfully, and we all miss it, but everybody moves on. So, unit two is a residential unit above the former Mason Jar. Unit three, when you're in the Schoolhouse Road parking lot near the Chamber of Commerce, and you look to the left, you see Port Framing Studio Frame Shop. And above that, which was the subject of a variance from the Board of Appeals in 2009, in 1989, there is a residential apartment unit above that that was the subject of that variance. And then out beyond the CV zoning line on the plan that we gave you, the site plan in the RM zone, is Mason Tree Service, unit four. And Ken and Jill's son, Morgan Mason, so you have the most of the family. Morgan is here in the audience this evening, and his, we got a variance for him in 2007. Can't believe it was that long ago, but he ran a very successful tree business out of that shop with the variance allowed for an office above that. And that's in the RM zone. But it's all part of this one contiguous lot of, on the site plan, 16,079 square feet. So, to round out the family, the Masons, Jill and Ken's daughter wants to reside in the unit that we're seeking approval of tonight, in the former Mason Jar establishment area. And then, when you're facing the Mason Jar building, to the left, that used to be the dining room where you took your delicious sandwich in there, and there were tables, that's where, she's an artist, and that would, planning to have her art gallery there to sell her artwork.
I would call it more of a studio than a gallery, but she teaches at Stony Brook. She's a secondary teacher at Stony Brook Elementary, and she does artwork on the side, basically. So, it will be like a workshop for her, but it will remain commercial.
So, there's Masons all around in, on this property. And that's the plan, is to have the family all together, and then she would live there on the first floor. There's a residential unit above that, so two units in that building, residential units, but they would still be mixed-use, commercial with the art studio. So, we're asking for two special permits, one for a mixed-use development pursuant to 325-51M, and then for mixed-use development in the CV Overlay District pursuant to 325-51. In the Village Commercial Overlay District. We're also asking for a waiver of site plan review because there's been well, a long time, well-established parking area pursuant to an easement that we drew up several years ago, and you have a copy of that, I believe, and the easement plan that goes along with it. So, if you ever went to the Mason Jar, you could come in, right-hand side of the building that used to be House of Morgan, that's now the Three Buoyes Clothing Store. There's a driveway there that accesses that lot. The, this lot, Lot One on that easement plan, has the benefit of the easement over Lot Two for access and parking. You can also come in, walk in through the opening in the gate that has to remain that way, the opening split rail fence across from the Chamber of Commerce. You can walk in that way. You can also access it from off of Schoolhouse Parking Lot, coming in the way Morgan Mason comes in with his equipment and his trucks for the, for his shop. And then there's the existing stone parking area with all the well-established parking areas. There are four spaces dedicated to the clothing shop to the rear of that, but the rest of them are fair game, or used to be used for the Mason Jar. I don't want to call it delicatessen, that's what I'm trying to avoid, but the establishment. So, to meet the requirements of a mixed-use development, and also in the Commercial Overlay District, but the mixed-use development requires that commercial use face a street. So, as I outlined in my narrative, there are, not only would be the art studio facing Route 28, but then Schoolhouse Parking Lot is actually a road. That's Schoolhouse Road. It's a public road, and that's how the houses on that road derive their frontage for zoning purposes. And when you go further back in the parking lot, you see that two or three-story building that has kind of a cupola on the top. That's the old schoolhouse. My father actually went to elementary school there way back when. So, that's, that's a public road. So, we have two units. The Port Framing Unit, which is commercial on the first floor, faces Schoolhouse Road, and Mason Tree Service faces Schoolhouse Road. And then this art studio would face Route 28. So, when you add up those percentages, as I set forth in my narrative, it would, you have to have at least 33% of floor area of buildings dedicated to commercial use on the first floor. And John Ideman, when Mr. Mason met with John Ideman, the former town planner, Mr. Ideman indicated that you can use that percentage in the aggregate. You can take all three units and add them together, which when you do, it adds up to 46% being dedicated to commercial use. So, our position is that we meet the requirements for mixed-use development. The overall lot, as I mentioned earlier, is 16,079 square feet. It's in two zones, primarily in CV, some of it in the RM zone, but that is the subject of the variance for Mason Tree Service, so that's being used as commercial use as well. And so, our position is that under the mixed-use section of the bylaw, you have to have fifty, I'm sorry, 5,000 square feet of area for each residential unit. My opinion is, we meet that requirement. We happen to have a lot that goes into the RM zone, but I think that the wording of the bylaw is such that it can be interpreted to mean that as long as our residential units are in the CV zone, then we would meet the requirement because our overall lot is over 15,000 square feet. However, in talking with Elaine Banta, she indicated to me that her thinking is that because the Port Framing Unit was the subject of a variance back in 1989, that that residential unit above Port Framing doesn't count. So, we're just left with, we've got a residential unit already above the former Mason Jar. We want to create one below it. And as you will see in her findings, you've probably seen it already, she's estimating it's about 13,000 square feet in the CV zone, and we would only need 10,000 square feet to meet that requirement. So, either way, I think we, it's a win. We're also seeking a waiver of site plan review because of the parking spaces, as I indicated, are already, already established and are more than adequate. And in effect, we're probably diminishing the amount of traffic and parking by converting this to a residence primarily and partly as a commercial. So, I think that's also a win-win because trying to have more housing in town and in downtown, and yet we're maintaining a commercial enterprise at the same time pursuant to the special permit, if you see fit to grant that. So, we're asking you to waive the site plan review pursuant to the bylaw because there's no real change in the traffic or parking needed as a result of this requested change in use. And as I pointed out in the narrative, there's no change to the footprint of the structure either. It's all internal, and I outlined in heavy dark line what would be residential and what would be the art studio. So, I think we meet the need, meet the requirements of mixed-use and this, the CV Overlay District. And I think that you, for the Overlay District, it does make mention that you can have a contiguous lot that's in, might be in different zones. It makes mention of that, and that's what we have here. So, I think the bylaw anticipated that we would have a situation like that because there are a lot, a number of lots, a lot of lots, so to speak, that go more than 20 feet, 200 feet back from Route 28. So, they're in, partially in the CH1 zone and partially in residential zones behind them. I don't think there would be any adverse effect to the neighborhood, that the site is an appropriate location for the uses that are requested and will not constitute a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and we will keep the Board of Health happy as far as the subject system is concerned. We'd ask that you grant the two special permits and the site plan waiver this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Megan, was there any things that you wanted to highlight from Elaine's report?
There were a couple portions that she had...
Yeah, she spoke to me some length about this.
Okay. She had wanted this zoning table split up into both, into both zones. So, this table that is provided combines the CV and the RM, and she had indicated that it needs to be one zoning table for the CV and one zoning table for the RM. And she was very clear about keeping unit four out of the mix of things for approvals and had mentioned that a, a space for residents to gather was not located on the plan, but is something that you could request to put on the plan. And before any approvals are official, we should determine that one zone has 5,000 and the other zone has the 10,000.
Right. So, do we have any questions from the board?
I just have a question as to a why to your last statement. Would you feel, because sometimes you would just do, the most restrictive use would be the, would be the numbers that you'd be looking for, so I'm just...
For the 10, the 10,000 in one zone and the 5,000 in the other? Because this requires 5,000 per unit in the Overlay District, and there's already two.
So, I also have a couple of questions on the staff report.
Yep, please.
So, 19 and 20 really are, mostly recommended privately, but they're really statements for board. So, I don't know if you have something to put on those two items, Megan?
Just to highlight that this Schoolhouse Road is one lot over from the subject lot. There is a lot of land that is actually along Schoolhouse Road, and that, this lot is on the other side of the lot that P G was on. So, when we talk about it fronting Schoolhouse Road, there is a lot in between the subject property and Schoolhouse Road.
So, that's with respect to 20?
No.
Talking about the, in terms of the landscape, public area, was that what I was referring to?
Those were two separate statements.
Yeah, and 19?
19 and 20 are two separate issues to contemplate.
May I address that?
Please.
Okay. 19 and 20 would be no problem. Residents can sit right out where the customers used to sit for the Mason Jar in front of the building, at the table out there. And the Ken's, Mason's daughter would be, I'm sure, saying, Dad, you need to put in a walkway to my art studio so customers have a way to get in instead of coming in through the front door into my living room. So, having a presence or something that shows customers where to go to the art studio is no problem.
Okay.
So, could we ask that those that...
Put on the plan? Yes. If I may, just comment on the 10,000 and 5,000. Using Elaine's reasoning that the variance doesn't count, then we have two units. So, I don't know if it's really necessary to show that we have so much in the RM zone and so much in the CV zone. I think it's pretty clear that we've got at least 10,000 square feet...
Right.
...in the CV zone. She indicated to me, she talked with the building commissioner, and they made a rough calculation of about 13,000. On it, then we'll have it put on the plan.
Is that a stipulation we want to put on there, you think? I mean, yeah. I don't think, I don't think it can hurt.
It couldn't hurt.
So, is it contentious that you want it on or you don't want it on?
I was just trying to see what the board thinks. Let's, let's see. Is there anybody, well, Bill first.
I have a question on Schoolhouse, on Schoolhouse Road. Does it end at the back of the...
Chamber?
Chamber?
I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Stoltz, I talked with Paul Sweetser when he was Assistant Town Engineer a number of years ago, because this had come up, and he indicated to me, he says, people don't know it, but that schoolhouse, that parking lot is a public road, and it's used for frontage. And it was used for frontage on that house that you folks granted a detached accessory residential dwelling with bedrooms for, for Mr. and Mrs. Vassal several years ago. So, I don't know the answer to it. I don't know this is a road layout plan that you can look at, like most roads.
That's the same to be, because it's not on any of the plans, the town, taxes, or anything.
But Mr. Sweetser said, Bill, that is a, that is a public road. He said, believe it or not, it's a public road and it's used for frontage. Otherwise, those houses have no frontage.
Right. What else the point I was getting to?
So, I don't know, I'm assuming it goes all the way out to Route 28 because nothing tells me otherwise.
Right.
Except for the, they have drawn a lot line at the back of...
Of?
The building we were just talking about. Chamber of Commerce.
Right, but that's, that's not...
It's got to be a lot line if it's drawn on there, right, Bill?
That's the end of our lot, but that's not where...
I meant, no, but for the Chamber of...
Schoolhouse Road, Schoolhouse Road is over to the east.
The Chamber of Commerce lot has a line drawn right directly against his lot.
I'm not following, sorry.
Well, it's interesting, it's listed as Schoolhouse Road, so I don't think there's any ambiguity on this.
Not at all.
Right. The assessor's map puts it as a road, so I think it's...
It does?
Yeah. Right there at the top.
If you go back...
By Pleasant Street, I think.
Historically, it was a road.
A road or a driveway.
From Route 28 to Pleasant Street.
Right.
And when they built the parking lot, they just expanded the roadway area to include it, but they didn't eliminate the road because that would have eliminated the frontage for not only the two houses on, you know, behind Morgan's shop building, the old schoolhouse and the other one, but also for Teddy Apostle's old house, which is on the other side, who wouldn't have any frontage. He owned the restaurant where the Three Monkeys is now called the Sword and Shield. Goes back a long way.
I remember.
But also, that road to get from Pleasant Street, get all the way out to Route 28, so I don't know, it wouldn't make any sense to me that it would stop...
Right.
...two-thirds of the way. Its function, part of its function was to get from Pleasant Street to Route 28.
Right.
Or from Route 28 to Pleasant Street, more importantly.
Yeah.
I don't, I think it's a road. It makes sense that it's a road the whole way.
I would think the assessor's map would show that it was abandoned at some point, if there was, if it wasn't still a full public road.
Look at this. There's the line I'm talking about. This is the parking lot, extended parking lot for the bank. And that is the lot line, I think, for the Chamber of Commerce, right there, which comes right to his lot line.
But the Chamber of Commerce and the...
It would have to be on a lot.
Mason and the Three Buoyes lot have a area of asphalt parking lot road between them. They don't abut each other.
They, they have a dirt driveway, right, that goes behind the Masons.
Right, but that doesn't abut the Chamber of Commerce building or property.
It does.
There's a parking lot in between.
Right.
That's what the Chamber of Commerce is sitting on. And Chamber has to be sitting on a lot, not in a parking lot.
They are on a lot.
That's what I'm saying.
But there's a public road parking lot in between.
All I'm getting at is, I think the road ends at the back of Chamber of Commerce, and then you go through the parking lot to do access to 28.
I respectfully disagree, Mr....
Either way, it doesn't impact what we have to decide on here.
Yeah.
Is there anybody from the public that has any questions for the applicant or for the board? We have a, are we have a consensus here one way or another? Any objections? I don't see that there are any, you know, besides putting the stated changes to the map, excuse me, to the plan with the breaking out the footage on the two, two zones and the access pathway to the studio. Those are the only two things I think we have in contention from staff report.
Anything else, Megan?
Okay.
If I add a, if I add a condition relative to the square footage and just state that the square footage shall be detailed on the plan relative to the particular zoning district?
We can do that.
You okay with that?
If we're going to change the zoning table, that will be in there anyway. That would be part of it.
Right.
That's fine. I just want to make sure I know careful language.
Don Poole's got the whole thing in his computer, he can do it in five minutes.
Right.
What I may is that the Masons have been, this has been in the works for a long time, and it would be great if the condition, if we didn't have to come back...
Right.
...a month from now with showing you these changes on the plan.
So, we could make it condition to... Stipulations?
Megan, is this something that, that DHB could pass approval on?
Sure, we could ask them to check it out.
So, if they review the changes to the plan, subject to the approval of the town's current engineering staff, DHB?
I mean, as far as...
Then if, if they, if they give their blessing, then you're fine.
As far as the zoning table and the, and the square footage, those are the only...
The changes on the plan for the access in the landscaped area.
To show the access to the art studio in the landscape area where the residents can gather.
Gather, right.
And to show the split of the zoning and the percentages, I mean, the square footage amounts.
Right.
Yes. Okay. As long as engineering's happy with that, I mean, that's a factual...
Right.
...objective thing that can be...
We can tick those boxes, right? We can tick those boxes, right?
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope.
So I would, um, make a motion to propose that we adopt the following recommended findings. One, the subject property is 544 Route 28, Harwich Point. Assessor's map 14 parcel F4 dash C1, located in the C-V, R-R and R-D districts. Two, the subject property is under condominium form of ownership, has access and parking via recorded easement agreement in Plan, entered in Book B2481, Page 260 through 263, the municipal county registry of deeds. And thereon has three structures along with a small shed. Three, the rear portion of the lot in the R-R dash M zone currently has a two-story building, Unit 4, and was granted a use variance and a special permit, Board of Appeals case number 2007 dash 28, recorded in Book 22301, Page 73, at the municipal county registry of deeds, to operate a tree service business with office, cabinet and storage above, and specifically no residential use. Access to and parking for the structure is over and on the easement area and is accessible via the park road. Four, the middle structure, Unit Number 3, currently has a two-story structure with a retail sales use on the lower level and a residential unit on the second floor, and was granted a use variance, Board of Appeals case number 1988 dash 68, recorded in Book 6585, Page 099, at the municipal county registry of deeds, to create a second residence for a year-round Mason jar employee. The structure is wholly in the C-V zoning district. Five, pedestrian access to the rear building is available from the Route 28 sidewalk via a four-foot easement as shown on the easement documents and vehicle access and parking is over in the easement area as well. Six, the main structure previously operated as a restaurant, fast food takeout on the first level known as the Mason Jar, Number 1. A separate residential unit is located on the second floor, Unit Number 2. Seven, the proposal constitutes mixed-use development under the Harwich zoning bylaws, which is allowed by use special permit in the applicable C-V zoning district. Eight, accordingly, the applicant has applied under Section 325 dash 51, subsections A, L and M of the Harwich zoning bylaws, for use special permit for a mixed-use development in the Village Commercial Overlay District. Nine, the buildings in sight are pre-existing non-conforming in the terms of various dimensional requirements under the Harwich zoning bylaws, and no changes are proposed. Ten, for each mixed-use development, there shall be a minimum of 5,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit in the Commercial Village District, and a minimum of 10,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit in all other permitted districts. Therefore. Eleven, the total lot size for the C-V and R-R dash M zoning districts combines approximately 16,081 square feet. The board, um, the board has determined that the, um, plan remanded to show each zone, um, square footage separately.
Is that 16,000, six, 79?
Uh, this is 16,041.
But elsewhere it was 79.
We said 79 on the plan, plus or minus.
79, plus or minus.
Whatever your pleasure.
It says approximately.
This is, this is from the engineer.
Eighty-one, so approximate.
If it is written elsewhere as 79, I will use 79 to be consistent, so I'll commit that. 16,079 square footage. Twelve, staff's rough calculation shows approximately 13,000 square feet in the C-V district, therefore two units are allowed in the C-V district, and as there is one existing unit on the second floor of the main house, Unit 2, one additional residential unit may be created on the first floor. Thirteen, the new commercial use will be located at the front of the building facing the street at ground level pursuant to the criteria contained in the Harwich zoning bylaw, Section 325 dash 51 dot M. Fourteen, the proposal's narrative details that all four units in the aggregate have a total commercial floor area of 2,573 square feet, or 46% of the total floor area of all uses, 5,591 square feet. Fifteen, the proposed commercial use is conducive to supporting small local business and the residential unit will provide an additional unit to the local housing options. Mixed-use development is encouraged in the villages and under town, the town's planning initiatives and current general planning patterns. Sixteen, the site parking and access via recorded easement plan deed, Book 24, 23481, Page 263, is generally undefined gravel spaces, is located to the rear of the property and is adequately screened. Four spaces are shown as specifically dedicated to the uses at 546 Route 28. Seventeen, this site parking is pre-existing non-conforming as to the current parking standards laid out in Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Zoning Code, Chapter 325, Article 9, given the nature and scale of the proposed use. The assumed reduction in intensity of use by converting the majority of the restaurant commercial space to a residential unit, that there are public on-street spaces along Route 28 and other municipal lots enclosed per se to the property, and that the existing parking and loading adequately served the existing retail service uses without issues reported. The existing number of site parking spaces and other existing features are sufficient for the proposed uses. Eighteen, the mixed-use development is considered a new use within the meaning of Section 325 dash 51 of the Harwich zoning code bylaw. The proposal also triggers site plan review jurisdiction under Section 325 dash 55. The applicant has applied for a waiver of site plan review. Nineteen, um, board has determined that a pedestrian approach to the art studio from Route 28 is necessary and the applicant shall provide adequate access and landscaping for the new retail studio, which shall be, uh, indicated on the plan. Twenty, uh, there shall be an outdoor landscaped public area provided as part of the landscaping requirement pursuant to the mixed-use regulations, Section 325 dash 51 dot M. Four, and that such areas shall be shown on an amended plan. Twenty-one, subject to the Board of Health Review and Approval, the system shall be adequate and appropriate for the proposed operation of the proposed use. Twenty-two, the proposed use and development will not adversely affect the neighborhood and the property is in appropriate location for the proposed use. There are other mixed-use developments on neighboring properties and there exists a mix of uses in the development types in Harwich Port Commercial Village. Twenty-three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians introduced by the proposed uses. Twenty-four, the proposal meets the standard to grant a waiver of site plan review as the applicant does not propose any changes to the building, exterior or any site changes. The proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structures to the site or to the abutting property and structures. Twenty-five, the applicant's app, application is date stamped August 15th, 2022, and includes the applicable and relevant submission materials required by the board and otherwise meets the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code. Among other things, the application includes a site plan of land prepared by Mason, prepared for Mason jar condominiums dated August 1st, 2022, prepared by Outermost Land Survey, Inc., Mason jar condominium Unit 1 Plan, Sheet 2 of 5 dated December 10th, 2008. Excuse me, and prepared by Stephen D. Moore, uh, professional lands surveyor. Project narrative, Mason dash 544 Main Street by Attorney William Kroll. Twenty-six, the planning board held an closed adieu notice public hearing on the request at its meeting on October 4th, 2022.
Have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any further conversation, discussion?
Can I make one point before you take a vote?
Please.
I know that you're missing two members tonight due to illness and you folks obviously are not all on top of your game. Thank you for coming tonight, but just a reminder, I think we have to have a five to nothing vote.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, well, so why don't we call a vote? During, uh, any, no, no conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
You have your five.
So I would move that we, um, adopt the, um, adopt and grant a mixed-use development special permit, a Village Commercial Overlay special permit, and vote on a waiver of site plan review for the Mason Family Realty Trust, 544 Route 28, Units 1 and 2, subject to the following conditions. One, that the project shall obtain Board of Health approval under said Board, sectioned and not applicable. Uh, that the amended site plan shall demonstrate compliance for the per-unit square footage requirement in the outdoor landscaped area in the mixed-use bylaw, Section dash, uh, 325 dash 51 M, Sections 2 and 4. That the landscaped access, uh, and outdoor, uh, landscaped public area as detailed in Findings 19 and 20 shall be included on the plan. That, number four, that all lighting and signage must comply with the town code. Five, the project shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application materials set out above. Six, the changes to the site not authorized under this decision may require further planning board review and modification to this decision and any relief, uh, not expressly granted here, under is hereby denied. Seven, the decision shall run with the property. Eight, the square footage, um, as we, I think, previously indicated, shall be detailed on the plan relative to the particular zoning district. And any or changes, um, required on the plan shall be subject to the approval of DHB, the town's engineer and their discretion. And nine, the decision, uh, shall not be effective until it is recorded with the municipal county registry of deeds. Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Mason, though. Where, where do I go to get that, um, liverwurst on pumpernickel with hot mustard and dill that I've been jonesing for for like 20 years?
Well, I, I can tell you this. I usually make a big batch of Mason jar hot mustard around Christmas time.
Yeah.
So I might have to put you on my list. Once you get the mustard, the rest of it, you
Rest is fine.
That's true.
Yeah. It's a great sandwich.
Yep, I've been missing, I've been trying to reconstruct it for years, to no luck.
They are all, as good as they are, they are all worth less than $50, however, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Yeah. This is going to be good.
Duly noted.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate yours. So we move on to now to case number PB 2022 dash 19. Eastward Companies, William Marsh President seeks approval of mo, of a modification of an approved definitive subdivision of a certain portion of the sidewalk in front of lots 5 and 6. Said subdivision is known as Bascom Hollow. The application is pursuant to the code of the town par which Chapter 400 and Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 88K through GG. Bascom Hollow is, Hollow is located on Map 97 in the R-R and the W-R overlay zoning districts. We have Susan Ledoux present via visual.
I can't hear her.
Do we need to move? Nope, not at all.
You're good.
You're good. Susan, are you muted yourself?
Muted, on the bottom.
Oh, we have it muted right here, I can, well.
No, we're asking, is it working?
Oh, all right.
Susan, our, um, out speakers are working in here, but we can't hear you, so I recommend maybe backing out and logging back in. Sorry.
But I have, we have audio, so it shouldn't be a problem.
I love the infinite mirrors there.
Oh, oh, look at that. Wow, I've never seen that before.
Happy to do that.
I'm sure that was an echo chamber that that's crazy. Oh, here we, now we're having something.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, no, that sounds like a commercial.
First of all, I want to, I want to say how, how thankful I am that you did, will allow me to attend remotely. Um, I, I work out of state now, I don't know if you knew that full time, so I appreciate it.
I've been having it, sort of.
So we are here tonight, we're asking for a modification of our Bascom Hollow subdivision, the definitive subdivision plan. And what I submitted was a narrative, uh, letter to you, uh, asking for a waiver of walk, as well as a planned section, so you can see the, the area that I'm talking about. So the planning board approved the eight-lot definitive plan in 2018 and a sidewalk was shown on the plan and profile to be installed along the north side of the subdivision road within the road layout in front of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6. And the sidewalk's generally been constructed as each lot has been developed and driveways are installed. We're now building the new home, and actually, when I wrote the letter, we were, uh, in the middle of building, we're, we're slowly wrapping up building on Lot 4. And within the next few weeks, we'll be installing the sidewalk in front of this lot and its driveway, and then connecting to, uh, the existing sidewalk of lots 1 through 3. And then we'll be doing a portion of Lot 5. So lots 5 and 6 were developed, uh, with homes in the last few years. And the section of sidewalk that's shown at the cul-de-sac was not installed at that time and but we did install landscaping, irrigation, uh, trees, things like that. And so now we're asking if that section, it's about 98 feet of sidewalk minus the driveways on lots 5 and 6, and we're asking for a waiver of, of that. Two of my letter, uh, I state the following reasons. And, uh, stated earlier in the letter, lots 5 and 6 have been developed and landscaped for a few years. And installing a sidewalk at this point would disturb the lawn's irrigation systems, landscape, lighting and mature plantings along the frontages of these lots. And we feel that disturbing the existing mature plantings in front of lots 5 and 6 with the installation of more pavement does not make sense environmentally or financially. Uh, we'd be disrupting these folks' yards. And number two, the subdivision road is not heavily used and is a very quiet street. And we've had a couple of residents tell us that it's quiet and, and no one really uses, uh, the sidewalk right now. Three, Bascom Hollow is not a long subdivision road and there's no possibility or plans for a future extension of the road. You can see how it's laid out. We don't believe that this section of sidewalk would be used as residents have told us that the existing sidewalk's not used by pedestrians. And number five, any pedestrians coming from homes at the cul-de-sac can easily access the existing section of sidewalk to make their way to Orleans Road without conflicts with vehicular traffic on the street. And two other waivers, uh, we are asking for the, uh, MLC and municipal lien certificate. We ask for a waiver of this requirement as, uh, no building lots were involved with this modification request. And, uh, then the submission of a larger plan. I, I hope, or I believe that you can, uh, see what we're asking for a waiver of, on the plan that I've submitted. So that's our, my presentation, and I understand, um, you know, our preference would be not to post, um, uh, a financial, um, amount in lieu of this 98 feet of sidewalk. But we do understand that the board has a policy and I have seen the consultant's, uh, suggested amount of $1,900. And if the board, uh, does waive this section of sidewalk, we, we will agree to pay that amount if that's a condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Megan, do you want to review the staff comments for us?
Sure, um, we did have our consultant, DHB, review the application and they found that they were in agreement with the reasons the applicant gave for the waiver and didn't have an issue with, um, needing any revisions. And they felt it was something that the, the planning board could approve. Aside from that, it is y, your choice whether to take, um, the Aside from that, it is your choice whether to take the nineteen hundred in lieu or waive that as well. It is a very small portion of
Right.
of sidewalk that isn't going to be put in, and it is very incidental.
Right. Any comments from the board or questions? Do we, I have a question. Do we have a kind of a standing policy for this performance fee imposition? Is this more kind of a punishment thing, or is it kind of procedural?
No, people pay in an in lieu fee where they don't do a sidewalk, and I don't see why we would waive the, waive the fee.
Okay.
I mean, it's not a large fee.
Right.
Frankly, I don't know why the sidewalk wasn't done originally when the lots were built, so.
Right.
I mean, I, I understand Sue's point that they, that they were built a long time ago. But if, that was always a requirement to have a sidewalk there and
Right.
and at some point, somebody with a child might be living there, and there might be a school bus coming down that road, and they're not gonna have a sidewalk in front of their house, so.
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah, Bill.
Where is the sidewalk ending right now? At the beginning of lot five, or at the end of lot six?
I can answer, yeah. Right now, Bill, the sidewalk, as I said, lot four is, the sidewalk is being installed to connect to the sidewalk in front of lot three. So, it will continue, and do you see the red bubble, bubble that I put on the plan?
Yes.
The sidewalk in blue will end right before the red bubble. So, I'm only asking for a waiver of the section of the ninety-eight feet, linear feet, in that red bubble.
Okay, so lot six is a panhandle, so that won't have a sidewalk. And then.
Yeah, it's mostly driveway, yes.
Yeah. And then, so it's gonna end about halfway on lot five? Correct?
Makes its way to the, to the cul-de-sac, yes.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions on the board? Do we have any questions from the public? Be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll vote, I move to close the public hearing.
A motion. A second, all in favor? Aye.
So, I guess I recommend that we vote the, adopt the following findings as a fact. One, the subdivision is known as Bascom Hollow. It was originally approved by the planning board in PB two thousand eighteen dash thirteen on May twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Said plan is recorded in book six seven five, page seven one. Plan was subsequently modified in twenty twenty to reconfigure a lot on the south side of the way at the Cash Performance Charity. It's currently held by the town for thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Two, an application for a modification of the definitive plan and waiver request. Do not construct a certain portion of the approved sidewalk along with the application submitted to the town clerk on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The application includes the applicable and relevant submission materials. Meets the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code, including a narrative of reasoning and hand-marked plan entitled, "Plan and Profile Sheet Three of Seven, Prepared for Eastward Homes Business Trust Prepared by Clark Engineering LLC, One Fifty-Six Crowne Road, Suite Eight, Chatham, Mass. Zero Two Six Three Three, dated four forty, twenty eighteen, and revised five nine, twenty eighteen." Portion of the sidewalk under review runs in front of lots five and six and is approximately ninety-eight linear feet and shown within a red circle on the plan. The homes on lot five and lot six were developed and landscaped early on in the development of the subdivision. By constructing the sidewalk, would disturb landscaping, irrigation, lighting, and plantings. The remainder of the subdivision sidewalks will be constructed. The board held a duly noticed hearing on October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
With one amendment, that is in item number two, the date is four-ten eighteen, not four-forty. There's motion, a second.
I recommend four-ten twenty eighteen.
Are you gonna waive the fee or the sidewalk?
I think that comes up.
Next.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, I would move that we approve the waiver to exempt the construction of the sidewalk as shown on the hand-drawn plan entitled, "Plan and Profile Sheet Three of Seven", pursuant to four hundred dash fourteen dot M seven, and require an in lieu performance fee of nineteen hundred dollars.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
So, we now move on to case number PB twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Seven fifteen, Harwich LLC, Somil G. Patel, manager, attorney Howard Cahoon, Jr., representative, seeks approval of special permits for mixed-use site plan review and Harwich Center overlay pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, sections three twenty-five dash fifty-one M, fifty-one dash O, and dash fifty-five. The property is located at seven fifteen, Main Street, Assessor's ID forty dash D seven dash one in the C dash D zoning district. Good evening, gentlemen, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Howard Cahoon. I'm losing my voice, I can't stop you on it.
Welcome to the club, we're all in.
But that's good. I'm here tonight with our architect, Helen Bass, and he's submitted the plans. We've worked very closely with Elaine to make sure that we're presenting you something that you can hopefully approve. The LLC that we're, that's here before you, is made up of four people. And these are the two sons, Neil and Elaine. They both graduated from Howard High School, and they have a vested interest in Harwich Center. As you know, we've been before this board before. They built a lovely building where the old gas station was, and I think it's a credit to the town. In any event, this is, of course, the package door. And evidently, at one point in time, the previous owner proposed the exact same thing. And for one reason or another, it didn't materialize, and it was never followed up on. So, we come before you tonight with a plan and a concept, to have two apartments there. We've been before historic, we've worked very closely with them. There won't be much change to the building, and it'll be in keeping with the rest of the center and the village concept. And when you talk about being more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's in keeping with the neighborhood. There's an apartment complex across the street. There's an apartment, bedrooms in a new building that was built on the old garage, gasoline site. So, I think we're in good shape there. You have the plans, and I've looked at Elaine's comments, just briefly. I didn't get them until a few minutes ago, I guess. But we certainly want to comply with any stipulations that she has and we have. And we certainly are gonna comply with any separate requirements, and we're taking that into consideration. We're working with our engineers to design any additions that might need to comply with different. But anyway, I don't want to give you all much. Helen's here to go over and talk to you about any of the questions you may have in terms of the plans. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Great.
And much like what you just heard from Crowe, to some degree.
Right. Did you, did the, did you wanna take us through any important parts of the design concept at this point, or?
Sure, I mean, I can just give you a quick brief presentation if. For the record, help you, but I'm a professional engineer with offices at one twelve State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. And as Attorney Cahoon indicated, I was here in front of this board back in what we did, the seven eleven. So, I'm pretty familiar with the area, and you've seen the end product, so I'm sure you're pretty pleased. Similarly, this is what we wanted to do, this is an existing building. It's mixed, the first floor currently is occupied by retail space. The second floor is already framed for two apartments. The layout is there. So, basically, we looked at the building, just to make it work in terms of code, we had to maintain, we have to have two means of egress. That's why we proposed a couple of, one small addition to the front and one addition to the side. So, we can, we did go in front of historic, and I believe they did approve the plans that you have in front of you. Part of, also part of the site improvements would be to add four parking spaces to the side of the lot to the east side of the building in order to comply with parking requirements. Also, what we would, we propose, we propose to collect all the runoff from the paved parking, because we're adding some, we're changing the lot coverage on the impervious, and collect also the addition from the roofs into a drywall on-site. So, therefore, we won't increase any runoff from the site to adjacent properties or street. We also propose some landscaping. Unfortunately, I see your packet, it's only black and white, so I kinda have a quick, I have the larger prints here that you can see, we propose landscape to the side. This is the east of the building where the four, four parking for the residential units would be located. And we have a closed entry here that they can use to enter the building. And also, there's another closed entry to the front for another means of egress as required by code. I also have some rendering on the, on the building. And as I said, the building would be similar to what you see on seven eleven in terms of materials. It would be all wood siding with white trim and architectural shingles. Lighting, we're, we're changing the posts, the old lighting poles, actually, to match the one on seven eleven, which, what you recommended at that sign. So, it'll be continuity of lighting through that section of town. I do have detail of the lighting posts, I believe, here. Yeah. And we're also changing the signs to a more architecturally attractive signs. And we're meeting all the sign regulations as far as setback and sign sizing. We will be meeting the code compliance, the code setbacks, we're not in violation of any. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much. Why don't we take, you hear what staff report is on the.
Oh, sure. This was referred to police, fire, water, and conservation, and they had no issues or concerns. The Board of Health did want to let you know that the system was designed in nineteen eighty-nine and does not have the required capacity. I believe the applicant's aware of that, and knows that a fully compliant septic system's required prior to occupancy. And something, a, a system design plan will have to be submitted prior to building permit sign-off. And a building permit is required for this. Aside from that, I have no other comments.
I have a question, if I may, for you. Looks like it's gone through the process with historic very well.
It has gone through the process with historic, and that was the one thing that I just wanted to point out, that because this is in the Harwich Center Historic District, that the HDHC has some jurisdiction over design. So, the applicant did come back and make some changes as suggested. The, because this building is set a little bit further back than, say, the new building is, the bump out in the front actually brings it a little bit closer to the street, to make it more along the streetscape, and really gave us a nice aesthetic front to more adequately fit into the, into the aesthetic on the.
Looks like the massing is done well, and the idea of the porch is really.
So, yes, this was the result of first discussion with the applicants, and then they came back with with some changes based on some suggestions of the board members. So, we were pleased with the, with the plan as it is. So, that's why it's now here before planning board.
And I'm not sure we have many more projects, but we learned to work well with.
Do we have any other questions, Bill?
I have a question. On the east side? I'm sorry, south side? The stairway going up to the apartments?
Are you looking at the floor layout?
Yes. Yeah. Nine of twelve. So, you have, you have doorway coming off, looks like a small hallway?
The south side. You said the south side?
South side and the.
The entrance on the side, right?
So, you have the addition on the east side. Okay. And that shows, shows two stairways. I think one goes to the cellar?
No, there's, no, there's, there's no, there's no cellar in this building.
Okay, so there are two stairways going up to the second floor?
Well, there's two. The front and the side.
But you can go from the, there's those two here.
So, it's from the side?
Yeah, from the side, right.
So, that stairway goes up to a platform?
It goes to a platform.
And then?
And there's a door, and then.
There's another door at that platform?
What's that?
There's another door at that platform?
Yes.
It just seemed like there was a lot of treads and rises to get to the second floor.
Yeah, actually, we did the sections, and that's what we needed in terms to get up to the second floor. Because this is a commercial first floor, so the height, I believe, on the first floor was fourteen feet. And then you got the trusses. By the time you get to the second finished floor, you get probably sixteen feet or over.
Okay. Because the front stairway only, it only shows one stairway.
It's two.
Hmm?
It's two.
In the front?
Yes.
On Main Street?
Yeah, yeah.
There's one stairway.
No, it's lighter, because once you get up to the, so it's, it's a split. You go in. It starts, it's a split, because you got sixteen feet, I believe, we had like sixteen feet from the first floor to the, to the second floor, finished, second floor.
I only see one stair.
There's a second stairway.
You go up this way, you turn, and then you come back.
Is that the front foyer, Main Street foyer? Or I'm over here, Rick?
Yeah, I think that this is part of a stairway.
That there?
Yes, there.
It looks like it's coming down.
I can see the, from the elevation on sheet ten, while you've had that gray.
This is the front foyer?
So, you go up, you turn, see the stairs are here.
The stairs are where?
They're here, but you don't see, see the light color, that's why.
I can barely see that.
Irrevisible in that way.
Hmm?
You don't show a revised first floor plan.
Oh, we just have to dodge in those, no, the stairs are there, but it's.
That's right.
And this copy's a little darker.
I can't see it either.
I can't see it.
Yeah, this copy's darker, you don't, yours is light.
Yeah, we need a better drawing on that, Rick. You can't, because this doorway shows, it's gonna go into the stairway. It's gonna go into the stairway.
Go flat into the, there's no room, is what you're saying, right here.
You gotta have one conversation.
Well, we have that, yeah, can we just get one at a time here, sorry? Let's go at the staircase, what we were talking about here.
So, this is the door, this is the door into the area.
So, there are two runs, you just, it wasn't clear, okay?
There's enough room to go into the stairway. And that stairway comes up further, it's up above it, is that right?
Right, and there's no section to reveal where that is, that's what I was looking for, okay. But you're satisfied with that?
No, I am.
Okay, I thought we should have a section showing that stairway.
Right.
It would be nice to have seen that, but that's more the building code issue than it is a planning issue.
Yes. And you all were talking about, just to make sure. Same thing, okay?
If I may. If I may, Maya?
Yes.
I agree, I mean, this is, we have to, building permit set, it'll be more detailed than what you said. So we'll have the sections, the fire separations and all that details will be on the building. But I, I agree, it's, it's probably when it was plotted or something with the color on these, so we'll.
Mr. Stoltz is.
He's an architect.
No, he's a builder.
I figured, either an architect or a builder, so thank you for the comment.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address, even though? You have some representatives here, so. I don't know, do we have any more questions about the viability of the plans at this point? Seems pretty straightforward.
Some would just go to public hearing, there's nothing.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So.
So I would move that we adopt the following recommended findings that won the property owner 715 Harwich LLC. Is the applicant Samuel Patel, manager. Two, subject property is addressed, is addressed 715 Main Street, Harwich Center, map 40, parcel D7-1. Is approximately 31,984 square feet. Is located within the C-V zoning district in the Harwich Center Historic District. Three, the current use of the property is a small retail shopping center. There's one main retailer liquor store and two smaller shops. The applicant proposes to convert the current attic area into two two-bedroom apartments and construct entrances at the front and side of the property to access the apartments. Several other improvements are shown on the plans and include additional parking spaces, exterior weather protection above the egress doors, siding, window door and roofing improvements, et cetera. Landscaping and lighting improvements are also shown. The applicant has applied to Planning Board for a site plan special permit approval pursuant to chapter 325-55 of the Harwich zoning bylaw and chapter 400, article three of the Harwich Code. A site plan special permit is required for expansion of the structure and the new proposed mixed-use pursuant to chapter 325-51.m. A Harwich Center overlay special permit is required for dimensional setback requirements and is pursuant to chapter 325-51.O. dot five. The Planning Board serves as the special permit granting authority for developments within the Harwich Center Overlay District. Five, the special permit application packet and narrative was filed with the town on August 31st, 2022 and includes the following plan set entitled Proposed Second Floor Apartments. 715 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Prepared for Chuba Engineering Group, P.C., CEG in parentheses. 112 State Route, North Dartmouth, Mass. 02747. Prepared for 715 Harwich LLC, dated 8/10/2022. Twelve sheets, including cover sheet index. One, existing and proposed site layout sheet two, grading drainage and utility plan sheet three. Site details sheet four, existing first floor layout sheet five, existing second floor layout sheet six. Existing front and rear building elevations sheet seven. Existing right and left side building elevations sheet eight, proposed second floor layout sheet nine. Proposed front and rear building elevations sheet 10. Proposed right and left side building elevations sheet 11, architectural renderings sheet 12. Six, the Historic District and Historical Commission approved the applicant's certificate of appropriateness. Application is case 2022-07 on July 13th, 2022. The plan demonstrates that the project is consistent with the historical elements and development patterns. Seven, the zoning code allows for a minimum of 5,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit in the commercial village C-V and applicant proposes two apartments. The first floor of the building is largely used as retail and at least 33% of the floor area of the building is dedicated to a commercial use. The pre-existing store fronts on Main Street and the shop entrances are located on the ground level. Nine, modifying the dimensional requirements for front setback to 22.2 feet as permitted in the Harwich Center Overlay District will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw and are without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or overall public good.
Ten.
An outdoor landscaped public area shall be provided as part of the landscaping requirement pursuant to the mixed-use special permit requirements. The landscape plan is otherwise appropriate and consistent with the applicable requirements of the zoning code and will be a pleasant addition to the site. Twelve, there are 15 existing parking spaces onsite. Four additional residential spaces are proposed adjacent to the rear alley entrance for the apartments. The parking is sufficient in number to meet the minimum parking space requirements of the zoning bylaw. The parking is adequately screened on the site. Thirteen, the proposed use will have no substantial site circulation or traffic patterns existing use. The property has adequate access from and sightlines to Main Street and is bound to the east by a 40-foot way. Fourteen, the proposed development shall meet the requirements for Board of Health approval. Fifteen, subject to the conditions of approvals stated herein in the application and site plan conform to the appropriate sections of the Harwich Code for special permits, including site plan review. All new and or replaced lighting shall comply with the HDHC guidelines in the zoning code. Sixteen, all signage is subject to the zoning code and a building permit application is required. Seventeen, the Planning Board opened and held availability notes on the hearing on, on the application on October 4th, 2022.
Have a motion, have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass this unanimously.
So I would recommend that we grant the special permit approvals with the following, special permit approval. 715 Harwich LLC for site plan review and mixed use in Harwich Center Overlay as reviewed with the plan set entitled Proposed Second Floor Apartments at 715 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Prepared by Chuba Engineering Group, P.C. and dated 8/10/2022, subject to the following conditions. One, this project is subject to review and approval by the Harwich Health Department and Board of Health. Two, the proposed development shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials above. Three, an outdoor landscaped public area shall be provided and shall, shall be shown on the as-built plan. Four, this decision shall run with the property. Five, this decision shall not be effective until it is recorded with the municipal county registry of deeds. Six, changes to the site unauthorized under this decision may require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. Seven, the applicant shall conform with the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to chapter 400-18.g. of the Harwich Code.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. You're welcome. I don't think anybody has to change their seats for the next item, which is case number PB 2022-22. 721 Harwich L.L.C. Samuel G. Patel, manager, attorney Howard Boone Jr., representative. Seeks approval of special permits for mixed use and a site plan review pursuant to the code of the town Harwich, section 325-51.m. and -55. The property is located at 721 Main Street, assessors ID 40-D5-1 in the C-V zoning district. Nice to see you this evening, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. This is a smoke, present smoke shot, I have no, rising of the building is, the parking is adequate at the moment. Very similar, more housing, more, more safety at night, more, it looks like. We ask your approval.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chuba, did you want to make any special notes about the architectural layout or?
Yeah, let me start with the site just quickly. So basically, as we, we, the changes on the site would be just to pave the, the back portion of the project. Currently, there's a gravel parking lot in the back and it's really hard to maintain in the winter and all that. So we propose to pave the rear portion of the parking. Again, we regraded the lot to pick up all the runoff from the site to a drywall structure onsite. So it'll be no runoff and add some landscape and again, changing the old, adding a light pole in the back to match the 7-Eleven and the 721. On the architectural, as attorney just mentioned, there'll be no enlargement of the existing foot area of the building. There's a dock in the back that it's open dock with, with the, with the roof structure. And basically, we'll be enclosing that to add the living space to the, to the front of the building. Basically, we'll have two commercial units on the front, small units to meet the requirements in the mixed use. And I'll have access from Main Street, if I can go to the floor layout, if I have the floor layout here. I'm not sure, I, oh, I do, okay. So there'll be two commercial units in the front with access from Main Street. And then there'll be two residential units in the back with, with each with two bedrooms. And that's the architecture of the building. Again, all the materials would match what's on 7-Eleven and 715, architectural, the roof and the siding and the windows. We'll be changing the front a little bit to add another window, another door here for this unit. But we're keeping the, the brick of the original design and accent it by some new windows and details to make it more architecturally attractive.
Mr. Don, do we have any comment from staff on this, different from what we already had?
From what you already have, no, fire, water, DPW and Board of Health have all reviewed it with no issues.
Do we have any questions?
So I would just comment again that this was one of, one of the plans that came before Historic and Historic also had input on the, on the aesthetics of the building. And they came back and made changes that we had requested and suggested. Also received approval as well.
Just as an observation, it is so great to see how well Historic is working with developers and the results are just like textbook, they belong, they deserve to be published. I mean, this is really the way it should work.
There are. There are people on my board that, that know a heck of a lot more than I ever will, so I take their.
You're directing pretty well.
Thanks.
Well, it's just a testimony to the fact of how far this has gone in 30 years. I mean, it's just, we couldn't even get people, you couldn't get a form at a Historical Commission meeting. So anyway, this is really nice to see. Do we have any?
See the changes.
Yeah, any further comments, Bill? I think you've got yours open.
Okay, the two downstairs apartments, they have one entrance to each?
Correct.
Are they supposed to have a second egress?
That was a comment from the Building Commissioner early and I haven't had a chance to talk to him. I just got the comment recently. But the, the first floor has upgrade access. So I believe, and I'm gonna talk to the Building Commissioner, that we don't need two means of egress. But in case we need two means of egress, it's a very simple solution, which we might have to go back to. We changed one window from a bedroom to a door. And it's not really gonna change the look of the building. We might have to go back to historical, which I believe it's maybe an administrative or non, something. But I want to talk to the Building Commissioner first because I believe we don't need two means of egress on this.
Because he probably could use a larger window that would serve as egress.
Yeah, but all the windows in the bedrooms, they meet the requirements, so, but we don't have, you know.
We'll cross that bridge, I guess, if we need to.
Discuss it with him, I guess.
Yeah, I will.
That's right.
So I guess I'll ask the question, is it, is it worth continuing to a future date so you can have the conversation and fix the plan rather than close the public hearing and have to start all over again for another, another application? I personally think it would be.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Easier to.
Just stipulate that he has to check with the building inspector for the second egress.
Right.
You're okay with that, with that?
Yeah, and approval by you as far as the architect.
That would seem to thread a couple of needles with one condition.
If the window's big enough in the bedrooms, then he's probably gonna let him use those.
Right.
It should be stipulated.
So is everybody saying that if a second means of egress is necessary, the town's engineer can approve the changes to the plans?
Building inspector.
Building inspector.
Building.
Building Commissioner.
And he may aspire to.
I will say that HDHC approval might be required.
If it's visible from the street?
Yeah.
Could be that it might not have to, might, might not be visible.
So I'll just say it may still be required, just as a, to put it out there.
One isn't, one isn't. One isn't, one isn't.
Okay, so I would. Make sure to close the conversation.
Yeah, we did that, so we're closed.
I would move that we adopt the following recommended findings of that. One, property owner 721 Harwich LLC is the applicant Samuel Patel, manager. And two, the subject property is addressed, is addressed 721 Main Street, Harwich Center, map 40, parcel D5-1. Is approximately 13,068 square feet and is located within the commercial village zoning district and is in the Harwich Center Historic District. Three, the structure is pre-existing non-conforming. Four, the current use of the property is a retail store. Five, the applicant proposes to redevelop the property into a mixed-use development with two retail shops at the front and two two-bedroom apartments at the rear. A site plan special permit is required because a new use is proposed on site. Six, the proposal includes constructing a covered porch at the front with two commercial entrances and expanding the, enclosing the covered loading dock at the rear to provide two residential entrances. Lighting and landscaping improvements as well, as several cosmetic changes are also proposed. Seven, the applicant has applied to Planning Board for the site plan special permit approval pursuant to section 325-55 of the Harwich zoning bylaw, a mixed-use special permit pursuant to section 325-51.m. And a Harwich overlay special permit pursuant to 325-51.l. And chapter 400, article three of the Harwich Code. The proposed mixed use in Harwich Center over, um, in Harwich Center. Overlay special permit is required for dimensional requirement. Eight, the zoning code allows for a minimum of 5,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit in the commercial village district and the applicant proposes two apartments. Nine, at least 33% of the floor area of the building is dedicated to a commercial use. The pre-existing structure fronts on Main Street and shop entrances are located on the ground level. Ten, modifying the dimensional requirements for front setback to 22 feet as permitted in the Harwich Center Overlay District will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw and are without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or overall public good. Eleven, the proposed use has no substantially different site circulation or traffic patterns than the existing use. The property has adequate access from Main Street. The driveway entrance is paved along the western facade of the structure. Twelve, there are several existing gravel parking spaces onsite at the rear of the property. The parking is sufficient in number to meet the minimum parking space requirements of the bylaw and the parking demand anticipated by the applicant. Public parking is available on Main Street. Thirteen, the parking is adequately screened from abutting properties and, and proposal, and the proposal to put a bituminous paved area in, which includes a handicap parking space. Handicapped parking space must meet all federal, state and local regulations. The sewer disposal system is Title V compliant and meets the regulations pursuant to the Board of Health. Fifteen, the drainage facilities proposed are adequate to manage stormwater runoff on site, uh, proposed conditions. Sixteen, landscaping slash vegetation is proposed on the southern edge and continues running along the easterly boundary towards Main Street and provides for reasonable screening. Replacement lighting is proposed at the rear at the existing footing. Seventeen, an outdoor landscaped public area shall be provided as part of the landscape requirement pursuant to the mixed-use special permit requirements, three twenty-five dash fifty-five and dot four. Eighteen, the landscape plan is otherwise appropriate and consistent with the applicable requirements of zoning code. Nineteen, the special permit application packet and narrative was filed with the town on August thirt, thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and includes the following plan set entitled Proposed Modifications at seven twenty-one Main Street, Harwich, Mass. oh-two-six-four-five, prepared by Chuba Engineering Group, P.C., one-twelve State Route, North Dartmouth, Mass. zero-two-seven-four-seven, prepared for seven twenty-one Harwich LLC dated eight-ten, twenty twenty-two, nine sheets. Cover sheet index sheet one, existing and proposed site layout sheet two, grading drainage and utility plan sheet three, site details sheet four, existing floor layout sheet five, existing building elevations sheet six, proposed floor layout and right side profile sheet seven, proposed building elevations sheet eight, and architectural rendering sheet nine. Twenty, the Historic District and Historical Commission approved the applicant's certificate of appropriateness. Application is case twenty twenty-two dash zero-eight on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The plan demonstrates that the project is consistent with historical elements and development patterns. Twenty-one, subject to the conditions of approval stated herein, the application and site plan conform to the sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five and four hundred dash sixteen of the Harwich Code for special permits, including site plan review. Twenty-two, the planning board opened and held a duly notice publicly on the application on October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass this.
So then I would, uh, move that we vote to grant special permit approvals to seven twenty-one Harwich LLC, um, planning board file number PB twenty-two dash twenty-two for a mixed-use site plan review in Harwich Center overlay district as reviewed with the plan set entitled Proposed Modifications at seven twenty-one Main Street, Harwich, Mass. oh-two-six-four-five, prepared by Chuba Engineering Group, P.C., and dated eight-ten, twenty twenty-two, subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the proposed development shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials above. Two, an outdoor landscaped public area shall be provided and shall on the as-built plan. Three, this decision shall run with the property. Four, this decision shall not be effective until it is recorded with the Brunswick County Registry of Deeds. Five, changes to the site, uh, not authorized under this decision may require for the planning board review and modification to this decision. Six, all signage is subject to the zoning code and the building permit application is required. Seven, all new and/or replacement lighting shall comply with H.D.H.C. guidelines in the zoning code. Eight, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to section four hundred dash eighteen dot G of the Harwich Code. And nine, if a second means of egress is necessary, the building inspector can approve such to just to the plan, however, H.D.H.C. approval, approval may still be required.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We now move on to the public meeting portion of our agenda this evening with a covenant release on PB twenty-dash nineteen forty-three, Eastward Homes, Elijah Woods and Lucy Lane partial. So the covenant release, I believe, was, uh... Trying to find the material here. Staff comments on that, again, were, um, pretty straightforward.
That's right. Uh, VHB reviewed it, um, and, and had no issues with it.
Do we have any questions on this particular item? We looked at it a couple of years ago. Have the eight lots, I guess, all set, squared away?
Any questions?
Any questions? If we want to, uh, we're ready to take a vote? Okay? I don't, I don't tune in motion.
So I would move that we, um, adopt the following, um, findings of fact. One, subject property is located in the east Harwich off one thirty-seven and the development is known as Elijah Woods. There are two roads, Elijah, Elijah's Woods and Lucy's Lane. Two said subdivision is a ten-lot subdivision with one reduced frontage panhandle lot and two non-movable lots approved on December tenth, seventeenth, twenty nineteen, uh, planned, recorded in plan book six ninety, page sixty-two at Brunswick County Registry of Deeds. Three, one lot, lot one was released from the agreement covenant on March eighth, twenty twenty-two. Four, the application was presented to the town and stamped with the town clerk on September ninth, twenty twenty-two, and administrative requirements have been met.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So I move, I move that we, uh, vote to grant a partial release from the planning board agreement and covenant for eight lots and shown on the approved plan and endorsed by the planning board on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Eight lots being lots two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, and ten.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is taken care of. Welcome. And we have a continuation for the, um, sign-off for Zonhorse, so that's gonna get pushed back to October twenty-fifth, which is our, happens to be our next meeting. So we have a twenty-day, um, or three-week, basically, reprieve. Um, I don't know if we have any court briefing or correspondence. We've already talked about Historic. I have a quick note to mention that the, um, long-term or long-range planning committee has met once already, actually, I think, a meeting tonight, right?
They did.
Next door. Um, I had a very pleasant, um, cup of coffee with Joyce Mc... Who's running it. She wants to make sure that we have, um, information as needed. They will be posting their minutes on a regular basis, um, on the town website, so if we have questions, and we're always welcome to go attend. However, it looks like their, theirs is the first Tuesday of the month, right? So it's gonna be staggered. We, where ours is not always, you know, first, but it might be kinda nice for some of us to show up if we got a nice, if we have an evening just to kinda see what's going on. And they have a very wide-open mandate, so I think she's gonna have to try and tack it down, and it's a two-year project, so.
Make sure you don't have a quorum in the room.
Right.
Cause your, cause it's planning committee.
Right, right. Any other comments, questions? Anybody need a, um, cough drop?
Mr. Chairman, I won't be here October twenty-sixth.
Uh, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, fall of twenty-sixth.
And I won't be either.
Okay, so duly noted. We will see how we have to handle that on the fly. Okay.
Unless I can do it, um...
Like you, uh...
Screen.
Okay.
I have my eye operated on, so I feel the drive.
Okay.
I think we all...
Are you gonna be in a posi, are you gonna be, um, feeling well enough to actually do it remotely?
I think so. They just, they don't...
I think we all...
Oh, the chairman and especially the honorary... A debt of thanks for going through all of that when you're not feeling capable.
I've been fine. I don't know what the cough started. I walked into this building and I started coughing. I'm fine.
I came, I went to CVS before coming here because I was like, you know what? I know what's gonna happen. I know what's gonna happen. The whole day is great, and then it comes six o'clock and all fell apart.
I have a cough once. I, I felt fine. I've been fine all day. All of a sudden, I started talking too much and there was no...
Can I take a, a motion to, um, to, uh, adjourn?
When John Idman is here, he, he, he said we shouldn't, didn't have to read the findings of fact in intermedia or verbal record. Is, is, I know there's, you don't agree with that, obviously.
I...
Do we have a legal opinion on that in the town council?
No, I don't think you, I mean, I don't think you really have one. I think if you read the conditions in, then everybody is acknowledging the conditions. If you're just adopting something, they, I personally think it leaves you room for somebody saying later on, oh, well, I didn't read it that way, or I didn't read something in order, I didn't know that.
And of course, sometimes you modify them.
Sometimes you modify them, so I personally think you're safer to read the findings and read the conditions as opposed to just...
Thank you.
As much as I don't wanna reinforce, it's worth it.
Right.
Okay.
Single, single line copy.
I think it's, it's safe.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.